Alrighty, please silence your cellphones and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna swear in Marlene Grunder, our new board member, effective today.
Aye.
Aye.
Marlene Grunder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Board of Education.
Of the office of Board of Education.
I'm gonna make a motion that we enter executive session to discuss a particular personnel matter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carried. I motion that we come in back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carried.
Ms. Ella is first.
Oh, yes.
Invention Convention.
Where is that on the, uh?
It's all the way on the bottom. So, we have a surprise visitor. It's not a surprise to her. It was just a surprise to me after this was already created. And so, Ms. Ella Archibald for Invention Convention is first on the list.
Yay!
Come on up, kiddo. You need some help?
You wanna help her coach?
Or should I say dad?
Hi, my name's Ella Archibald and as you know, I won first place in the county invention convention for my category. So, what I invented is over there and it is called double dining. And double dining is like a little house where one animal can eat on top and the other can eat inside the house. So, like, because our dogs, they would fight over food. The larger dog was very territorial on food. And so she would eat her own food and the little dog's food. So, one was getting too much and one was getting too little, which was a big problem. And it did not work to feed them in separate rooms. We could put one in one room and one in the other and they would still find a way to get to each other. So, if you have a way for them to like eat together and apart, they can, it like work. So, we tested it out on them and it did work. You can see pictures of them using it.
Oh, wow. So, is the hole too small for the big dog to get into the little dog's food?
Yes.
Nice idea. And is your big dog losing weight now?
Yeah.
So, how did you come up with the idea to begin with?
Um, well, I was watching our larger dog be territorial on food and, and watching them fight. So, I thought like they needed a way to be together and apart.
Awesome.
In terms of food.
That's really cool. Really good job. Ella, would you mind leaving it here so we can take a look at it later and we'll get it back to you tomorrow?
Okay.
Mr. Graff said he'll bring it back or Mrs. Horchel. Okay. Great job. Thank you so much for waiting too. Back up to the top.
Oops, sorry. I'm on.
We're back up to the top now.
I'm waving to my daughter.
Done?
Okay. Okay. So, uh, we're looking at Model UN presentation.
Alright, good evening, board members. I'm Erin Farley. Uh, I'm a special education and social studies teacher at Eden for the past two years. And this year, um, I recently took Model UN under my advisement. So, we came tonight to present to you, uh, our achievements so far this year, everything that my students have accomplished. And just to reiterate the importance of Model UN, the opportunities that this club can provide to high school students. Um, and even to further emphasize its importance, um, I wanted to share a little story about a former Model UN student, Craig Whitmer, who was a part of Model UN and credits Model UN here at Eden to providing him opportunities to where he is now. And what he's doing right now is several things. He recently graduated from Seton Hall and is an advisor under a humanitarian doctor and is doing a lot of research in global genocide. And he's also been a permanent member of the Model U- uh, not Model UN, but the actual United Nations General Assembly in the Social Humanitarian Committee, working as an advisor and an analyst for the relations between the United States and Malta. So, just to show the opportunities and benefits that Model UN can provide to our high school students, um, I hope that that helps shed a light on this club and think about maybe funding it in the future. So, I'm gonna turn it over to my students who made this wonderful PowerPoint to show you all the achievements that we've done this year.
Um, I'm Ally Hale. This is, as well as you can introduce who's up there. We've spoken to the board before about Model UN, yesterday, last year, about funding for Ms. Paces and Ms. Farley's stipend, as Ms. Far- stipend, as Ms. Farley took on the new club, so.
Model UN, it's, we are a high school and a college club. It can continue on into high school. It stimulates the UN and we solve real world problems such as immigration crises. Um, for example, the one in Syria right now with refugees tunneling into Europe. We learn about other countries and events relevant to today. Um, we work on a lot of researching and public speaking, debating, writing skills, critical thinking, teamwork, and leadership. You have to know everything that you're talking about when you're in a conference. You have to know your country's policies through and through.
That was that picture from University of Buffalo, correct? Or was that?
Yeah.
We went to the University of Buffalo earlier in March and most of us spoke upon different committees. We were, um, most of us were Belgium or Belgium. I myself was Belgium. My committee dealt with refugees and immigrants personally, which is something that I've been working on a lot in Model UN lately. So, the importance of knowing that this is a current event was important to most of our committees because it was a lot of our topics. So, that means that we're not just studying the effects of immigration and refugee status on the United States, but we're studying the effects it has on a global, like a world scale. So, we don't just understand it from our point of view. We understand it from everyone else's point of view, from a humanitarian, social, religious, and economic way.
We, um, fund ourselves. So, we pay for all of our trips. We are going to be paying for Ms. Farley's stipend next year. Um, fundraisers that we have done in the past include the Box Project, which, more on that the next slide, chicken dinners, movie nights, and power washes. The Box Project, we slept outside in boxes without eating for 24 hours to gain money for our club. This shows us to some extent what people who do not have food or shelter, it puts things in perspective for us because we go and we fight for people's rights, sort of. And that allows us to see what they actually go through. This year, we had a lot of stormy weather. It was windy, like the next day, a tree pulver right where we were. So, that was a little scary.
What was it? It was like 28 degrees out.
Yeah, it was crazy.
It was windy. It was, yeah, it sucked. Um, but that, that last project is definitely puts things in perspective. Yeah, that Box Project showed us what it was like for people that, that don't have that home, especially when we're studying the correlation between our global world and the world that we have here in Eden.
We go to a few smaller scale conferences such as ones at UV and Canisius. We definitely focus a lot more on written resolutions, which is in line with upcoming core curriculums. And research is essential. If you do not know everything about your country when you go there, they're going to just go right over you and you're going to be put to the side as like they don't know their stuff. You have to know everything to be considered in these committees.
These, um, another side note is those committees, as we say small, it still means that we have from like 25 to about 60 members in a committee, which is, um, it doesn't seem like a large number, especially when we've had over 100 people in our committee. But, um, it's different when you're trying to talk and so are 60 other people. So, you have to really get your word out there. Public speaking is extremely important. Um, knowing everything that you have to say and getting together with other people. So, it works on your communication skills. It just works on all type, all types of social skills that a lot of people don't develop when they're in school that they can obviously develop at our club.
As last year, we went to Chicago. This year, we went to Cornell and it was an amazing experience. Everybody who went had such a great job, had such a great time. It was very well organized. The campus was beautiful. I completely fell in love with it. We went to committees such as the Ancient Greek Committee, the Munich Conference, UNESCO, FICA, and the 2025 Korea Crisis.
When is?
Um, while UNESCO, we focused on, um, the economic and social effects of problems. We talked about GMOs, genetically modified organisms, and how that affects people socially and, and the economy of developing countries who use those. Research, we have to do an extensive amount of research to know all of our viewpoints and opposing viewpoints. We wrote many position papers for, that would be given to our chairs who are the people who run the committee. And we, um, had to also research the rules of procedure. So, we had to know, it's run sort of like a classroom. We raise our placards and we even say like, "Point of personal privilege, use the bathroom." Or, um, "Motion to make moderated caucus" so that we could, um, discuss things openly with the other people in the committee.
The point of rigorous research that should, I think, be emphasized because this conference, we've been planning, we almost planned for a year. And we didn't actually get to do thorough research until about a month before the conference because they didn't send out our topic packets until April or until, what was it, the end of March? And our conference was three weeks into April. So, it was extremely important that every single day we were working on a new topic or working on new research and keeping up with current events or historical events because we only had about three weeks to do what we've been planning for, for a year. So, we funded for a year for this trip, but our research was hours a day, hours out of our day, um, aside from our sports and aside of our schoolwork, that we were expected to have a, a large amount of research for this, um, for this, at least this conference, sorry, that we were going to. So, it's very, it shows the determination and the persistence that all the members in the club have because it's not easy to do hundreds of pages of research and print out tons of things and write down resolutions before you even get there with all the other stuff you have going on in your life. So, it's extremely important to us, obviously. We wouldn't put this much time and work into it.
These are just some pictures from Cornell. We all had a great time. From this year's conferences, we learned a lot about research techniques. Um, we got research from multiple sources so that we had a valid position. Public speaking, that's something that you'll always need, something that we have gained from Model UN, collaborating with other people in order to solve problems. In the United Nations, member states don't always agree on topics and you need to work to make deals with them, to come to a consensus with them and create a paper that gives the ideas of everybody. And learning from each other with collaboration, um, we just sort of bounce off of each other. We have a great team and we just help each other learn. Cornell had a lot of great things to say about us. They thought that we were diplomatically amiable. They wanted to hear more from some of us and, um, we demonstrated research ability, took charge incredibly effective and had impressive speaking skills. We're looking forward to another great year. We're already planning conferences that we want to go to. We have been invited to so many, many out of the country, which would be something very big that we would need to fundraise a lot for.
Yeah.
Um, we were invited to one at Georgetown, one in California, which is the birthplace of Model UN. So, it's a very big deal in California and one in Ireland.
Another thing about being invited to all these colleges, especially Cornell, was the fact that Cornell is an Ivy League school. We have it, um, in New York where we live. So, not only did we just go there and stay in a hotel and go to conferences every day. We took a campus tour. We learned about what it's like to go to college there. We learned about the types of programs that they have. Cornell is one of the colleges that I am looking to apply for, for college in two years, one or two years depending on what happens in my life. But seeing that college, like Isabel said, we fell in love with the campus. Not only was it a beautiful place to stay, but the level that we are on in high school right now among our peers is the level that that college was on. We felt like we were part of the college. Most of us wanted to just carry our backpacks around to feel like we were part of that college. Going to conferences and being with people on the same level as us and being able to hold our education level to an admirable status that we appreciate because we know how to appreciate that level that we have being in this club was just, is a fundamental asset to my future search for college. When I went to Cornell, I wanted to look for attributes that I saw at that college that their UN group showed me. It was, it was fundamental in my future.
Alright. Um, if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask them now.
How many, uh, from Eden are in the Model UN? How many students?
Currently, our senior high group is about 14 members. And Linda Pace, who used to be the advisor for Model UN, uh, takes time out of her day at the end of class and does a junior high, Model UN, for seventh and eighth graders. And that actually has about 20. And about 10 of them will be moving up to senior high. So, it is growing because of all these successes that we've had and my students, members, talking to other students about the true benefits and opportunities that this club can provide. So, we thank you for giving us the opportunity to show you what we did this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, next up, band trip awards.
Hello, I'm Sarah Roberts. I'm the junior senior high band director and I am definitely one of my officers, Senior Alex Bianchi. Um, this year, we were able to go to Toronto, which was a great experience for all the students. Um, in the past, we had just taken the Wind Ensemble tour. Last year, we decided, since we had 50 successful Wind Ensemble tours, we would brick orchestra along with us. So, last year, when we went on trip, we brought orchestra out. This year, we actually brought concert bands. So, we traveled with three groups this year. Uh, we went up to Toronto for two days. Um, we participated in a competition called Festivals of Music. Um, at that competition, each group played three pieces and were adjudicated by three professional judges. They were all actually collegiate band directors and orchestral directors. Um, they talked and then after the students were done performing, they actually came up and clinicked with them. So, each group got to work with the different collegiate band or orchestra director. Um, at that point, they actually graded all of us and they gave us verbal and written comments. And then, we did a lot of sightseeing the, the day after on Saturday and then we had an awards ceremony. Um, at that ceremony, orchestra took second place with an excellent rating, um, in all the high school orchestras. Concert band took second place with an excellent rating, um, in all of the high school concert bands. Wind Ensemble took first with a superior rating, um, for all the high school Wind Ensembles. And then Wind Ensemble also won overall band award. So, that was all of the concert bands, Wind Ensembles, middle school and high school bands that participated. So, we actually got the highest rating out of band orchestra and choruses for the day that Wind Ensemble did here. Um, so, we are very proud of our students. They work very, very hard. Um, and then what happens is we come back and we listen to those recordings and we go through all the comments and we have another week and a half to prep for our state festival, which we actually host here at Eden. Um, so, we hosted that last week and all three of the bands here, junior high, concert band, and Wind Ensemble, along with the fifth grade band, um, all presented and performed once again three pieces for two judges. And, um, concert band and junior high and fifth grade band all received silver ratings and Wind Ensemble received a gold rating. Um, and just one bit about the Wind Ensemble, we have very, very talented students here and I just have to boast a little bit about how proud I am of them. Um, we actually had it on Wednesday when we had the power outage. And my students are performing at a level five out of six. And we're in the middle of our march and the power goes down and they all just kept playing. And it was the coolest thing ever. We got done and we all just kind of like laughed and smiled because we were so proud of ourselves. And it really, it, it's all to the students and the amount of time that they put in and the support that we have for the program here. So, I just wanna thank you so much. Um, and it really was very cool that we were able to do that. They were, they didn't skip a beat. They just kept going. And it wa- it was really cool. So, I just wanna thank you so much for your support. Um, we'll leave these. If you guys wanna look at them, you can. And then we'll, I'll take them back down to my room.
Ms. Roberts, have a question.
How many kids went on the trip?
Eight.
Andy, and how many chef rooms?
Eight.
From here or parents?
Um, only one parent. What? Uh, Mr. Simone one, um, Mrs. Ray one, Mrs. Nurse, uh, myself, Mr. Polino, um, Don Ramon Reyno, um, Jill Keller. Did I miss anyone's one? Mrs. Ak. Yes. And then, um, Mrs. Higher one. Any other question?
Yeah, uh, how many schools were there?
Um, there were four schools that were there, like four districts. But most of them were like us and they took multiple groups with them.
Okay.
So, there was one school that I think had six or seven performing groups just in there at one school. And I was very surprised since we went to Toronto. One of the groups was from Maryland and what, where, I don't remember now. Connecticut was the other. So, like, they were all coming from even further than we were to go to Toronto.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, the athletic survey.
Um, one of my presentations is, was actually at the request of two board members that are unable to make it today. Do you want me to? Okay. I will not just speak about one of those. I cannot be interested. Um, I will do the athletic participation survey first. Okay, um, about, in the middle of March, the board asked if we would do a participation survey to see exactly what our students were interested, um, in playing once they got up to the high school level. The surveys were distributed in, uh, through fifth grade through 11th grade during homeroom. I would ma- I made an announcement to tell the students exactly what they would be responsible for. Very quick survey and telling them that this was the time that their voice could be heard by letting us know exactly what sports they would be interested in playing. I asked them to take this serious and it was only gonna take about three to four minutes to fill out. The surveys were collected right at the end of homeroom by the homeroom teacher and the homeroom teacher delivered them to the main office. And a neutral party, who was a substitute secretary, she ended up tabulating the results. Uh, one note you should know is that any student that didn't follow the directions and maybe circled more than one sport, their results were not part of the tabulations. Okay. Here's an example of the survey. Sorry, it's a little bit bigger. Um, survey that was actually distributed. You can see that, um, it basically, there's a disclaimer. That doesn't work. There's a disclaimer up at the top just saying that, um, they don't need their name. Um, they are not signing up for this sport. You're simply telling me what you could possibly be interested in. Okay? Um, male, female, fifth grades through 11th grade and specifically.
Do you need to call a pointer or not?
No, I like to. Um, so, you can, I mean, you can read. Um, in the fall, those are the sports that are, those are the sports that are offered. Uh, but they were only to circle one. And again, at the bottom, they, there was a spot for a write-in ballot of any sport that we do not offer that you would be interested in playing. And number five, if you don't wanna play any sports, they were asked to please check that. Okay? Um, here are the results, or actually, I'm sorry. This is the attendance for that day. So, if you look at the far, there we go, the far right corner, okay? Those are the attendants. If you look, if I tabulated from Power School, um, 96 kids overall for fifth grade were there that day. Now, this gets a little funny. So, fifth grade, we had 43 girls turn it in, 47 boys turned it in, for a total of 90. What happened to the six pieces of paper in the meantime? I have no idea. Um, the better part is 10th grade, we had 113 10th graders turn it in, but we only had 104 in attendance. Now, you can ask why this would happen. You can ask why this happened, but again, we're asking kids to fill out a survey, honestly. Sometimes kids forget what grade they're in. Sometimes they like to be funny. Sometimes they, again, just wanna be funny. They may sign that they're a girl. They may say they're in fifth grade, whatever. So, it gets a little skewed, but this is what happens when you do a survey of this nature. So, that's a little comical. Okay, so, here are the results. Out of 356 females, what you'll see is this row has the sports. Um, then you have some of fifth grade, some of sixth grade, each column, all the way down. Then we have a total interested and at the request of the board, I was also asked to do the percentages. So, it goes all the way down. So, for instance, if you take the sport of girls soccer, fifth grade, we had 13 girls say they were interested. Sixth grade, 10. Seventh grade, 12. Eighth grade, 11. Ninth grade, 5. Tenth grade, 12. 11th grade, 16, for a total of 79. That's 22% of the females that were polled said that they would be interested in playing girls soccer that day. Now, the top results, the top three team sports out of 356 females, we had 129 say they were interested in basketball, 116 interested in lacrosse, and softball, we had 109. Um, I wanted to make sure that I separated the sports because a team sport is much different than, um, an individual sport. And again, these are all played as teams, but they also can be recognized as individual. Track, we had 64. Tennis, 28. And swimming, 24. Those were our top three for each of those. We did the same for the boys. We had 357 males that returned the survey that day. Um, again, we went same sports, same way down, same way across, uh, fifth grade through 11th grade. And then the total number interested and your percentages. The top three for males, again, basketball, 127 students out of 357 interested, lacrosse, 127, soccer, 97. Individual, track, 39, swimming, 34, and bowling, 29. Um, okay, so, what you're gonna see in the next slide is what I did was I took this year's current roster and I put it next to, um, the, the results from the survey, which, um, the results from the survey. What you're going to see when looking at the current roster sizes, I need you to remember a couple of things. Roster size- Roster sizes are dependent on, some coaches make cuts, some coaches may not make cuts. Each coach, it's up to them. Okay? Sometimes it has to do with the limited availability of helmets, shoulder pads, uniforms. Sometimes it's the district that says, for instance, bowling, we will only pay for a max of 24 athletes for bowling, 12 girls, 12 boys. And some sports, we have three levels, modified to varsity, some sports this year we went to 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, so those teams seem to be a little bit higher. Please note that varsity rosters are usually smaller than modified rosters due to the higher level of competition. The last thing you want on a varsity roster, for instance, is I don't want 30 kids on my varsity softball team because I really only play nine and then maybe 12 when we get in. So varsity rosters tend to be a little bit smaller, as well as the state, once you make it into sectionals and regionals, they will mandate how many kids you actually have on your roster. For instance, girls basketball is a max of 15. So you, this chart will show you the wide variety of roster sizes. So right now, again, the chart looks very similar to the other two that I showed you. And right here, this green one is for the data of fifth grade through 11th grade, these are the kids that signed up. The orange column, which I should have probably changed the color for you, but the orange column next to it is the roster sizes for the current year. And then the next column would be boys, the next column would be girls. So I'm going to give you a sport right now, let's take a look at basketball. The basketball program overall had 256 kids sign up. This year's basketball program had 77.
When you say, when you say sign up, you mean is interested?
Correct. 256 kids on the survey that was presented on March 31st may be interested in playing basketball next year. This year, we had seven...
That is a lot of basketball players.
I don't know how we would do it. This year, we did field three teams, girls, three teams, boys, we had 77. Basketball is a team that makes cuts. We had 40 on the boys' side, we had 37 on the girls' side. Does that make sense?
Yeah. How many cuts did you have?
For basketball, modified boys, I think, made 10, modified girls made, I want to say 14, JV girls made none, modified boys might have made two or three, varsity girls made none, and varsity boys made none. Yes.
Call that number 256, you'll get to in your next presentation.
Yes, I will. So that's what happened. Bowling's a good one, too. We had 54 kids say that they were interested in bowling. We had 21 come out for the current team. Okay, we had 10 boys and 11 girls. So that's what the data shows. Lastly, we had our lovely write-in, which it was actually, I really enjoyed the write-in responses. I love archery, 15, quad racing, would love it, number one, or, I'm sorry, one child. Gymnastics, I can tell you right now, ice hockey, gymnastics, and indoor track are the ones that I get, or, I'm sorry, yep, indoor track, are the ones that I always get questions about. There's always seems to be a kid every year, kid or two, even up to 10, that are interested in playing those three. Fencing, I would love that. And the nice thing I found out of this survey was that out of all the responses, goofy or not, only 58 said that they were not interested in athletics. Questions?
Donkey basketball?
Donkey basketball? Oh, I heard Miss Nikostro is really good at that. I heard that, I missed that here with the donkey basketball, Miss Nikostro has some stories. Is there any questions on this? Again, these are, these are the results of the survey. No.
Do you know the breakout in ice hockey, girls versus boys, and I noticed you have one less girls' sport in the wintertime compared to boys' sports?
This ice hockey breakdown, you know what? No. We did not have, when she tabulated the results, you know what? We did not break it out. I do, we do have it, we could go through about 700 and some results to find out if you want.
You don't have to.
If you want me to.
No, you do not.
As far as one last boys' sport?
Girls' sport in, in the winter?
In the winter? Yes, that's because of where swimming is placed.
Okay.
That is because of where swimming is placed. Yes. Swimming, boys' swimming is placed in the winter where girls' swimming is placed in the fall, so that would be the difference there. But they also have boys wrestling in the winter, we have girls cheerleading in the winter, but yes, I know what you're getting at, and yes.
Speaking of statement.
That's quite all right. I was asked by a board member to reach out to North Collins to see, number one, if they had any interest in merging for other sports, either because our rosters were low or as a source of revenue. The one thing I need to point out is New York State does have stipulations on my school district can merge. There's three stipulations in it. One is to develop a program in hopes that you will be able to have it as your own someday. Number two is a financial crisis that you may be going through, and number three is to save a program. They don't usually look at revenue building as a, as a reason why to combine, but we did, as requested, we did reach out to North Collins at this time. They have no interest in merging, as I've stated before, with any other sport besides football, and that's again, to hold on to their current programs that they have. Before that request was made, I had been in conversation with GoWanda, and I'm happy to say that we finally came up with an agreement with GoWanda that we are going to try to combine with them for the sport of girls' swimming and boys' swimming. So that's another one, that's really at the request of GoWanda to try to help them, they have no swimming program, and they know that we have a good swimming program. So all the ducks were able to fall in a row after about two months. So that's about it. Did I answer everything on that presentation? Good? By the data or by my personal feelings? The data, I would definitely do the survey again. I would like to make sure that my coaches, as well as my PE teachers, start talking to the fifth and sixth grade about what is offered up at this level for athletic competition. We usually don't do that in PE class until June in the sixth grade, I would like to do it a little bit sooner. As well as, I was very happy to see that out of all the funding gains of the survey, that 58 right now are not interested in some sort of athletics, and I would like to find out what they are interested in, and maybe if I could bring them over to, if I could offer something for them. As far as my personal opinion, I still believe that the best way of seeing what kids are interested in is to look at their rosters. Because you can ask me if I want to go to the gym tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM and I'll say, sure, and come 6:00 AM, I'm probably still sleeping in my bed. So I think the best way for, to see what kids want to play is who comes out August 15th. Because athletics is a huge commitment, just like anything else, and everybody says they want to until they get to that date, so that's about it.
Thank you.
Lastly, and I'll make this quick, I promise, is we have a neat new program we're doing right now in Eden. It's called Eden Raiders Unified Basketball, and I hope that everybody here gets a chance to see it. But what we've done, and I'm just going to go through these slides really quick as I talk, but New York State is in its second year of offering and developing a program called Unified Sports. And what it does is it takes your general ed population and brings them together, unifies them with your special education population in an athletic realm. And the athletic field that they chose this year is basketball. And at first I thought they were crazy picking, to me, one of the hardest sports to learn, but it has been the most enjoyment. You have kids that have never played on a basketball court before, general and special education population playing together in games against six other school districts in western New York. We were the ones that signed up, we received a grant for it, and we currently have 20 athletes that are a record of two wins, one loss right now, playing in legit basketball games with uniforms that were sponsored by the Booster Club, getting to know one another, and they are on the court, they are on the court, high-fiving, hugging each other, cheering. We had a student make the game-winning basket the other day. We had students that I can't get to participate in PE class, in my adapted PE class, but are running up and down the court because their friend told them, come on, let's go, let's get down and play defense. It is the most positive experience I've ever been in. You are either in tears watching or you're just smiling, your face hurts after about an hour of watching it. In talking to the parents, I had one parent tell me as they were crying, I never thought I would say that my son would be an Eden athlete, and they were crying. I had another parent tell me that they take for granted every time they go to their child's game and they complain about playing time, or they complain about this, forgetting that some students and some parents never get the chance to see their kid excel in anything, and now their son gets to hear his name on the announcements for scoring two points. I, we have a game tomorrow at Frontier, we have one more whole game next Wednesday at 5 o'clock. But I'm very proud of our district, of our kids, of our students for accepting this challenge and, and doing this. So if you have a chance, come on out and see it, and you will be disappointed.
Tears in my eyes, just listening to her. Are we all ready? So I'm going to just skip item four because there's no items to withdraw.
Could you get, could you get closer to?
Oh, she just pulled me away. Okay. I'm going to skip item four because there's no items to withdraw, so.
You have to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't, me, me, mother me.
Tell her what to do.
You have to ask if there's anything that we're...
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any items to withdraw from consensus?
Only if you want to discuss the newest revision for the non-resident student tuition policy, since I just sent it to you yesterday. No.
No.
Okay.
All right, item five, routine actions. Approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A through O.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose abstentions, motion carries.
All right, this is the time for public comments. You will be, please state your name and your position, and there will be a two-minute time limit. Number one?
Mark Vona, teaching the general music program down at the K6 building, the, excuse me, the 36 building, now Main Street building. What brings me here? There's been some concern about, you know, you, most of you know I'm retiring. I think you probably know that.
Congratulations.
Yes. So that's kind of, there's been some talk about the musical, and some concern about the musical because I'm leaving behind this huge musical for you folks to take care of after I leave, or figure out how to take care of it. So that's, that's what brings me here. I want to thank you folks for the job you do, I really don't take it lightly. This is a tough, at this time with what you're dealing with, with budget constraints and all that, and then trying to staff things, I, you have all my respect, and this is a tough one. And, you know, in the music department, there's been a lot of talk about how, how to do, you proposed a cut, then you put that aside and came up with another one, and like, what's the best thing? Well, this whole thing with the musical has brought that, me here, and it's brought me to talk a little bit about that.
Have you decided not to retire? I'm really curious.
I didn't go, I didn't go that far.
You'd go that far?
I didn't go that far, Mrs. Enzal.
Okay.
No, I'm still leaving at this point.
I thought I'd ask.
So I don't know, I have a few things to say that might help, I hope, with, with the situation. I'll read some of it in class over some of it, and then I'm going to leave this with you, and you're certainly welcome to, anybody's welcome to call me and talk to me, come down to my room and talk to me. I built that program starting, really starting 20 years ago because it started with a third grade musical, and then it morphed into a fifth and sixth grade musical in 1999, and it grew from there. So I did that, of course, with the help of this district, and I appreciate it, and thank you very much, and I'm sure that the parents and the students thank you also for, for the experiences that they've had. Anyway, I have to talk a little bit about the reconfiguration of music that, that was put out, which is the second way they looked at the music program, and they're talking about breaking my room up and having different teachers in that room. I'm going to state, and again, it's, it's here, that, the room that I teach, the general music in grades three, four, five, and six, is really the center of our music program. From that room, we feed into the band program, we feed the kids into the, into the string program, and the vocal program, the chorus program, and then the musical. That, that's where that, the teacher that's in that room sees the students, gets to know the students, and at that age, you're trying to watch them very carefully and see what their interests are and what their abilities are, what they want to do and what you think they would be best at, and you try and help them. You notice, that kid's interested, that kid's got some ability in that area, and you try and direct them. And that can take, getting to know them through third, fourth, fifth, sixth grade, those are very formative years for these students in music. So to, to break the room up, is, I, and I, people, other people here have heard me say this already, and I have given this out to the music department, they know that I feel this way. I, I don't agree with it, I think it's a mistake to break the room up that way. The performing groups, while they all have value and they're important, they, we feed into those groups, and to break it down at my level is to bust it apart at the feet, at the bottom of it. So I, I would recommend that, my recommendation is to look for another way to do it, and again, sorry, I'm not going to say how. I'm not here to make cuts, I'm not here to recommend cuts. We all know we would like, like to not have any.
You got about 30 seconds.
Yeah, all righty. So I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave this here with you, and you guys can look at it and see what you think about it. The, the person who runs that fifth and sixth grade chorus in my building is the person who should be Jermaine or the center person for the musical, and that person is, is the logical person that would, that would run a musical in the building. You can't just, it's not, it's different from the high school, you can't just throw people in there and say, oh, pop, we're going to have a musical, and grab kids out of the rooms and just throw them on stage. It's a different thing at my age level, at the age level that we deal with, it's not like the high school. So I would, I would ask that, you know, hold your horses, give that person a chance, whoever that might be that's coming in to take that position, and give them a chance to look at, you know, sort of get used to the room a little bit. I didn't even want to do a musical this past year because I was forced into January, if you remember. I did not want to do the musical in January because the fifth graders have done one concert before they got on that risers to do a musical. Those fifth graders did not have experience on the risers, so I didn't want to throw them up there to do a musical first. That's just not the way you do it. So I'm asking that you, you just take a breath, whoever's looking at that musical, you know, breathe deep and try and hold your horses and give it, give it some chance. And yes, you know I want to see, I would love to see this program exist, and Tom, although you know... And Tom, although you knows I'm leaving like $12,000 there, so, you know, if you can not get too excited about that. There's money there, okay? So anyway, I'll leave this with you guys. If you want to take a look at, if there's more information in here, please be willing to call, anybody be willing to call and talk to me about it.
I appreciate everything you've done with the musical.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Give it to Mike. Anyone else? Anybody else? Twice? Moving on. New business. Resignations. Accept resignation that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus driver Charles Schuster be accepted effective April 19th, 2016. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Schuster for his two-and-a-half years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Rosemary Peters be accepted effective June 23rd, 2016. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Peters for her 21 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion.
Is she here?
Nope.
Okay.
All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Congratulations for Mrs. Peters.
Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Patricia Saluski? Did I say that right?
It'll work.
Be accepted effective June 22nd, 2016. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Saluski for her seven years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you see her?
No.
Okay.
All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
So congratulations to Patricia.
Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective, and service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting, certification, and clearance for employment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Laura Sweet be permanently appointed as a clerk typist effective June 7th, 2016.
Second.
Discussion.
She's been a fabulous addition for the special ed office. I can just see that Mrs. Watzek has just settled down some during the year. So I appreciate you letting us bring her on this here.
All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Two-ten-year appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Jeffrey Servoni be granted tenure as principal effective August 24th, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Jeff is here. Where's Jeff? Congratulations, Jeff. We're gonna have a picture with everybody after, so don't go anywhere.
I should wear a suit.
Sorry.
Item three, ten-year appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Matthew Saramac be granted tenure as a technology teacher effective August 31st, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose.
I see him in the back. Congratulations, Matt. We're gonna have a picture, Matt, don't go anywhere. Even though Mike Burns doesn't have a suit on. This is a request of Mr. Shepherd.
Item four, ten-year appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Morgan Theophilus, did I say that right? Be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August 31st, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention.
Why Morgan? There she is. Congratulations, Morgan.
Item five, ten-year appointment. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Ashley Mason be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August 31st, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose.
Now Ashley's here too. Congratulations, Ashley.
Take one big one.
One big one, that's all you have?
Oh. We'll do it after.
After?
Are you guys staying? Or did you want to go home now?
We can do it now.
Do it now, so they can...
Okay, they're gonna do it now, so you don't have to stay if you don't want to. Oh, he doesn't want an empty room. I get it. To be on the front page of the Hamburg Sun in Giant. That's what we saw the last time. Oh, Amy, thanks. I appreciate it. Good job. What do you mean, suit? What are you saying? Go for it. Go ahead, you're the photographer. She's gonna reorganize you. Make it look pretty.
Yeah, nobody has control issues around here.
Especially not teachers.
I heard that.
I said that. I'm a teacher. I get my own control issues. Oh, that's so much... Excellent. Congratulations, everybody. Thanks. Okay. I will tell you, Mr. Shepherd, I'm sorry, Jen. Oh, no. That next year, Jeff's gonna take it upon himself to make sure we have snacks and treats at these ten-year opportunities, because it's such a big deal. So you hold him to that, okay?
Congratulations.
That would be awesome.
It's his idea.
All right, are we moving on?
Let's do it.
Item six, appoint bus driver. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Corinne Kanefick be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective May 19th, 2016 through January 18th, 2017. Salary is based upon CSCEA contract, Level 9, Step 1 through 2.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Item seven, appoint bus driver. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Paul Winter be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective May 19th, 2016 through January 18th, 2017. Salary is based upon CSCEA contract, Level 9, Step 1 through 2.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Extend appointments of part-time personnel. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel appointments be extended effective September 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. Brian Smith, .5 FTE technology teacher. Matthew Vogon, .5 FTE special education teacher. How do we say our names? Courtney?
Hanania.
Thank you. Hanania, .33 FTE family and consumer science teacher. Stephen Clancy, .53 FTE library and media specialist.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Number nine, appoint summer school personnel. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following personnel are appointed for the special education summer school program. Christine Durringer, special education teacher, three-and-a-half hours a day. Kelly Grimaldi...
Grimaldi.
It is a misspelled.
Grimaldi, special education teacher, three-and-a-half hours a day. Catherine...
Zouan.
Poor Barb.
Teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Tom Wall, teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Lori Mohan, teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Judith Razon, teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Gail Krebs, teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Oh, those last two or three weeks only. Elaine Funk, teacher aide, three-and-a-half hours a day. Dana Fazalari, speech therapist, maximum 50 hours. John Robbins, occupational therapist, maximum 54 hours. Marissa Falacaro, adapted PE teacher, maximum 45 hours. Darlene Smith, school nurse, three-and-a-half hours a day. Mary Lee Roush, substitute nurse. And Kara Corhamel, substitute teacher.
Good job, Jen.
Second.
She should read every week.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried. And then on C, we're pulling one.
So my apologies to the board. In the past two districts that I've been in, the social worker position was in the CSCEA or the support unit staff. But here, it's in the teacher unit. And when we go to full-time here, we do post. So we're, I'm asking to pull C1.
Okay. So approve change in hours. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following changes in hours be approved effective September 1st, 2016. Kathy Jeffers, music teacher, increase from .54 to .63 FTE. Amy McConaughey Whitman, art teacher, decrease from .71 to .50 FTE. Amy Francisco, physical education teacher, decrease from .85 to .81 FTE. And Sandy Plots, library and media specialist, decrease from .71 to .60 FTE.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Item D, approve hour changes for transportation personnel. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent effective May 19th, 2016, hours for transportation personnel be changed as follows. Susan Pratt, bus driver, increase .5 hours per day from 5 to 5.5. Oh, jeez. Mary...
Tara Shavitz.
Tara Shavitz? Okay, Mary Tara Shavitz, bus attendant, decrease 1.5 hours per day from 5.75 to 4.25. Don Priceill, bus driver, decrease .5 hours per day from 4.25 to 3.75.
Second.
Sorry. Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Item E, approve replacement of Siemens SB circuit breaker. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the SB circuit breaker for the cogeneration plant be replaced with a remanufactured breaker of the same model and type. Note, this was approved by voters last May and can come from the repair reserve.
Second.
Discussion.
This is something the voters already approved last May at the last budget vote. This is more informational in nature for the board, so you are not surprised that we're moving money from the repair reserve over to the general fund to cover what the voters approved.
Was there a second? All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Item F, approve use of funds from the Capital Reserve Fund. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, hereby approves and directs a transfer of $20,000 from the district's repair reserve fund to A 1621-469 service contracts consistent with the authority granted by the voters of the district at the district's May 19th, 2015 annual meeting and vote for the purpose of funding circuit breaker replacement in the distribution equipment of the district's cogeneration plant.
Second.
Discussion.
This is, again, same part of the last one. The bill is not for $20,000. So what would end up being transferred is the amount that it actually does come to in total. But it won't be a full 20.
All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Approve accessing of library items. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, obsolete items from the Eden Elementary Library be declared accessed as presented and disposed of as the district deems necessary.
Second.
Discussion. What's the plans? To get rid of the stuff that you...
You know, what we basically do with all of them is that some of them really get donated, some of them get thrown out, and some of them... I don't know, what else do we do with some of them?
Eventually, if we end up doing one large sale, then we have to access all of them anyway, so... And we were talking about at some point doing that anyway.
Yeah. And sometimes they'll do a book fair. You know, give them away. I've seen Vanessa do it here. You want something?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Item H, accept donation of in-kind services. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of in-kind services valued at $500 for concrete curbing pit near the pre-K playground donated by James Carter be accepted.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carries.
Mrs. Carter, would you thank your husband for us?
Item H, approve code of conduct. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the revisions to the student code of conduct be approved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Accept donation of Freezy Pops. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a donation of Freezy Pops valued at $47.94 be accepted from personal touch for all K-12 students on Raiders Respond Day.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I will pass it along to them, so they do that every year.
Yeah, it's nice. And maybe it's gonna be 60-some this year, so it'll be good. That one year it was 40-some, it didn't go so well.
Yeah, the Freezy Pops didn't melt.
They didn't melt.
Item J, approve appropriations increase. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2015-16 appropriations be increased by $6,846.35 to $27,10739.73 to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carried.
Just once again, to all our students who cut those box tops. I've seen them do it.
Item seven, information and proposals. The business report. Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, we all have it in front of us too.
Sorry. Item K, award plumbing contract. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the contract for plumbing, the Phase 1 project at the bus garage be awarded to MKS Plumbing Corporation in the amount of $43,000.
Second.
Discussion. I thought we already had them come in and do it.
There are different parts of this that are going on, so with the snaking in for this...
So it might be what you're thinking is, we had some, we had a contract, we had a, what do you call them? Come in and snake it and figure out what the problem was? And that was one piece to it. Now, this one is to actually hire a plumbing service on to come in and do the work.
Oh, there's work too?
Yeah, there's work that has to be done.
It's still, I guess...
I thought it was working really good.
Is it working really good?
It is, but there's still some underlying issues that need to be repaired in fall, so that's what...
It's, I think it was a flushing. Right?
Flushing and snaking.
All right. All in favor? I oppose. Abstention. Motion carries.
Now, item seven, information and proposals. The business report.
You timing him or no?
No need for that. All right, so first of all, for those who are here, I wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you. I'm sure everyone is aware, the budget passed. In fact, across Western New York, it was a good night for most school districts. So, yes. Yes, actually, Casser...
It's a weird name, Mike.
Kenneraiga.
Yeah, that one. West Valley.
And West Valley. Yes, those were the only two that I heard of. But overwhelmingly, around Western New York, it actually was a good budget day. So for our district, the percentage passing was 64%. And just to kind of put that in perspective, we are above average for our average here in the district, which is great. On average, we're at about 60%. Last year, we had a banner year. We were at 71%. And in our lowest year back in 2010, which is really when there were a lot of financial troubles, troubles, we were at 52%. So, it actually was a strong vote yesterday. So, congratulations to everyone sitting around this table.
I agree.
It is not an easy process. You go. Also, I wanted to point out Barb Tomasulo, who does an extraordinary amount of work to make the day come off effortlessly. So, between you and the election workers, I mean, it just comes off every year seamlessly. So, very nice job there. And all the other propositions passed as well. So, when we took a look at the bus purchases, as well as the buildings and ground vehicles, the savings account for bus purchases, as well as with the BOCs being able to use their capital reserve if need be, which hopefully we will not need to do that, but the option's there. Also, I want to point out for those sitting in the crowd, we have eight spots set up tonight around the table, which is rather unusual for us. Mr. Sutpin is actually with us for this board meeting as well. When you take a look at the board members who were appointed, we had three up last night. Three voted in, and in order, they were Marlene Grunder, Donald Sutpin, and Paul Shepherd. And that is how they were drawn. And number one in terms of vote total is the incumbent, so congratulations there. Marlene then got the next highest vote total, which is why she is sitting at the table. She is filling the spot for Colin Campbell. And then Mr. Sutpin is joining us for this month, and then will be sworn in again to start on July 1. So, congratulations to everyone on that. And thank you all. It is a fun time of the year going through the budget. It is nice to breathe a sigh of relief on May 18th, and then we get back to the business of the budget tomorrow. So, there you go.
I'd just like to remind everybody that Tom started on the vote day three years ago. It has significance.
It was the greatest day.
The greatest day.
Thanks, Mike.
My turn?
You got it.
So, I'd like to, I'm going to actually jump something in here, because also last night, what you would have noticed, and you should have noticed because it was everywhere and it was profound, was the First Annual District Art Exhibit, which was K-12 students, it had over 500 pieces. It was in the auditorium foyer, as well as in the library, and it was just absolutely stunning. There was one piece there that was a collaboration of a number of 7th grade students. I was quite taken aback and very thrilled that we have an Eden Music and Arts Boosters to partner with our Eden Art Department. So, that was just a really great night. Secondly, also up on the agenda was a community garden build, also just an amazing day. Again, decent weather. This is a collaboration between volunteers from the town and the school district. So, the Community Garden of Eden was brought to Kelly LaRosa, modeled after a garden in Hamburg, and in collaboration with our own garden club. And so, we have 25 3rd and 4th grade students with an advisor of Karen Inman, who are working with these volunteers. So, there are about 25 people or more that were here one morning, Saturday, the 30th, to put the whole thing together. Donors, I think they keep growing, because every day I get some more, but there was Mammo's Farm, Henry's, the Town, Even House, O'Brien's, Eagles', and then Tim Horton's all donated something to make that day or the entire garden spectacular. And I'd really like to push out a huge thank you to the building and grounds crew, as well as to our tech students and Matt Sarah Mack for prepping the sites. I saw them out there. I think it was snowing when they were out there, too. Was it? Who's here, Tom? Was it snowing?
I don't think so.
You don't think? But you wear shorts every day, so what do you know? But it was cold, and they work in some really crappy weather out there. So, there's some really great future plans. They are up on Facebook, so I'd encourage you to take a look. The rocket launch, I don't know how many emails came out about this, but I'd really just like to read an email that I saw. This is basically what it said, is that last week, there was an experience for Mrs. Musso's class and Mrs. Meredith's class, and it was amazing. Mrs. Malkowski, a 6th grade teacher, and her students invited students from Mrs. Musso's class to take part in their rocket launch. At times, I find it difficult to really teach young children the concept of what kindness and empathy truly means. I didn't have to say a word. They experienced it for themselves. The 6th graders were just as excited to have guests and have them participate in launching their rockets. Mrs. Musso's students were able to count down, push the ignition switches, and retrieve the rockets while making new friendships and establishing a larger sense of Eden community for both classes. And this particular email, and the writer of this email thanked Mrs. Malkowski, Mrs. Meredith, and all of the students. This is just another one of those pieces, just like Unified Basketball, where it's, when you're there, you just see that it makes all the difference, and I'm really proud of Eden. Raiders Respond Day is tomorrow, as you all know, and it's supposed to be a decent day, thank goodness, because we certainly had some years where it hasn't been. Just to let you know that Eden pre-K students will be collecting used clothing and shoes in small household goods donated to AmVets. Don't bring money, because they don't want it, but what they do want is a donation to the GLP pre-K wing on Thursday, May 19th, and they will generate funds to take care of soldiers, servicemen, and women who help keep America safe from harm. So, that's something new for this year. And then also, if you see our K to 2 students, they're doing a 1.5K fun run on the GLP grounds between 12:30 and 2:30, and every Wednesday in PE class since January, they've been working on their cardiovascular endurance, so I'm sure that they'd love to have you come out and support them. And there are so many other projects going on. Mrs. Tomasulo, could I ask, is there a place that the board could see all of those projects?
On our website.
On our website. Beautiful. Where can they go?
I think...
I put you on the spot, didn't I? Where'd you put them? I put her on the spot.
I found it.
You found it? Where'd you find it?
I think it's under Community.
Yes, you're right. Under Community, there's a tab called Raiders Respond.
Excellent. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that a lot. And then, in terms of an RFP for a school board attorney, may I borrow that back? All right. I need to read it, just so that I don't miss a piece. I have a feeling Mr. Breeden might get invited to be a part of something, just because he's not here. As you know, the board has retained Ferrara-Firenze as their temporary board counsel until the board takes action to secure a firm of a more permanent or an annual nature. Since it is a professional service, you don't need to bid this contract out. But as per earlier discussion, the board decided to engage in an RFP process, which is a request for proposal. A committee of three board members can create this RFP, and Tom and I can certainly help, and base it on what's considered to be the needs of the district in the near future. So, for example, HR, human resources, perhaps certifications, reduction of workforce, or building usage, as we have a building proposition coming in, or perhaps public relations. And then this RFP would be publicized. The next step, then, would be for that committee of three to interview those firms that they are interested in and make a recommendation to the full board. So, I guess what I'm really asking the board tonight is, if you're interested in being on this committee, I'd certainly take your name. Mike Burns would also, and we can get started anytime you want.
Breeden said he would.
Breeden said he would. How do I know that?
I heard him.
You heard him? Anybody else? Paul?
Jack?
Sure, I'll be on.
Jack's good? All right. So, we have Mr. Breeden, Mr. Shepherd, and Mr. Cuddy. All right, I will get back to you. Thank you very much.
Now, Mike Looby, who is he with again now?
He is a temporary firm for us, Ferrara-Firenze. They may apply. I would expect that they will, but they're not guaranteed the position. So, they can't help us through this. So, we'll reach out to Labor Relations to help us. And that's all I have. Okay. Item C.
The board. Tom, you want to, I mean, I'm on the town board also, and so I guess I'm going to stay out of it.
Yes. Okay. So, I had brought up a couple months ago, the tax collection. And really, what I talked about is whether or not the district had actually planned to bring tax collection back in-house or renew our contract with the town in terms of collecting taxes for us. And last year, the board had instructed that we were to sign a one-year contract pending the decision on which direction the board wanted to move moving forward. And part of why I bring this up again now is, well, number one, it's time to renew, but number two, there's also been a request by the town to share software costs with us as well. And for the board, if it is a one-year process, you may now want to consider that portion. If it is a long-term process, you may want to consider that. But part of that really is determinant on how long of a contract, if any, you want with the town. So, and for Mike, I know, being on the town board, you asked that I actually bring it up for the board to have that discussion, so it's not by you on the spot, because that's really unfair for you. So, I wanted just to open up the conversation to see if there are any discussions or direction in which you wanted us to move.
What are some of their options?
Some of the options...
What was the cost exactly for...
For the software?
For the software.
Okay. So, for our portion, and I'll pass this lead around, because we actually have it for each one of you. But in essence, basically, it is a sharing of the costs. So, $67.80 for the town, $67.80 for the district. And one of the things we're going to check with our auditors, if we are in a long-term contract, or longer than one-year term contract with the town, we'd go to our auditors. If it's only one year, we wouldn't even bring this to our auditors, because it would almost be a moot point. So, first of all, we pass this around, so you all have copies of it. So, are there any thoughts in terms of direction in terms of tax collection, ways you want to move, short-term, long-term?
Is there a savings if we do bring it back?
There would be a savings, yes.
Bring it back? What is it?
In-house. So, if we had an in-house staff actually do the collection of the taxes. So, we pay approximately $11,000 sum, plus we pay postage, so our overall costs for tax collection are about $15,000. The $11,000 is directly through the town of Eden. It would cost us less if we actually did it in-house, and we would just have to figure out the ways to do it, how we would actually be open on nights and/or weekends, as we don't have a person right now to do that. Doesn't mean we can't do that, we just don't have that right now.
You have to have variable hours.
Right, I understand that. And then, we'd have to figure out a lockbox of some sort, too.
Do you have any idea what kind of savings?
No, I don't. Not at this point, because we...
Because we would have to pay somebody for nights and weekends...
Correct.
...that we're not paying now.
Or someone we're paying now, but extra hours. Correct. So, it would depend on how many hours. And once we do that, then we can start putting together a budget, if that's the direction we actually want to move. But figure out how many hours we'd be talking, what the rate of pay would actually be, then I can figure out a potential cost for that.
There are districts that do it that way.
Yes, sir. In all fairness, I would actually say, I didn't know if this, personally, I didn't know if this would be the year that we would necessarily want to bring it back in. With the change to the tax structure this year, the state has actually put in for STAR. And as I brought up at the last meeting, now STAR reimbursement will be different for new homeowners. I feel that this probably will be a year we hear a lot of comments from a lot of new homeowners who have not been on the tax rolls last year. So, is this, and this is a question I posed, is this a year we would want to change a lot when we already know we're going to have a lot of questions and/or concerns from the public, the first year of going to a brand-new state system? So, that's something to consider.
We have days for now.
What was that?
Is this just a discussion, or you want to...
It's a discussion. We don't need to make a decision at this meeting, but pretty soon, the town is going to want to know a commitment, whether it be one-year or multi-year. And then, again, that question of whether or not we would want to go into a tax collection software.
So, how much time do they have to decide?
I don't know that. I would have to call Mary Jo and find out the deadline for that.
Because I think it would depend on how much savings.
Right. Well, that would be one of the things, how much money we're going to save. We're always looking for any kind of money we can save.
We could put that together for the next board meeting, if that's what you want me to do.
Yeah, I would like to see some numbers on that.
Sure.
And the other question is, what software would we use if we brought it in-house? Would we have to purchase something? Is there something through BOCs?
I could check with Erie County and see what the recommendation is on that. Nancy DiLannardo, who has made presentations to this board, that's who I could reach out to and say, what are the requirements and what are your recommendations if we were to do it?
Could you reach out to some of the districts also that do it and see...
Sure.
See what kind of problems they've had, what kind of recommendations they have?
Other questions, comments from anyone? Okay.
Not a requirement of a board member to collect the taxes, is it?
I know.
Are you volunteering, Paul?
No, I'm just trying to get out there, because I don't want to be on the committee if I don't draw a comment.
Are they asking for a decision?
No, but pretty soon, I mean, they're going to need to know if they're collecting for us or not. During the summer months, everything has to be prepared for the tax bills, and that's just around the corner. So...
So, by the next meeting? By June, you think there's going to need to be a decision?
I really feel, and I could be wrong, but this is my opinion, I think we're putting the town in a very bad spot if we don't come up with a decision very soon for them. They need to know what they're doing to move on.
So, if you can get that information by the next meeting, we could...
Yep, it'll be approximate, but it'll be a guesstimate.
Or do you just want to move forward for the next year, commit to a year, and still get that information?
You could do that, too.
And then...
What about with the software?
Well...
I don't want to buy software. We're not going to be...
We don't know if we have to make it tonight. You said we didn't have to make it.
That's correct. Again, my recommendation to the board, just my personal recommendation as Director of Finance, is, given the change in the state's STAR collection, I personally would recommend to the board that we take it in this year, just because of all those changes and questions. I do not, just because of those changes.
So, even though it might be a savings, you think it's a bad year to do it?
Correct, because the first year you do it, I will guarantee it's going to be human nature. There will be some errors. There are going to be. There will not be a perfect system. And do you want it to be a year where you're already going to have a lot of people who are irate, because they're going to blame the school district, because they're not getting their STAR savings, because of state change?
But now they call the town.
They call both.
I mean, really.
They do call both.
But they don't even know about the STAR savings.
Oh, but they'll know it when they get their tax bill.
No, they won't, because you said new builds that haven't had it before. So, they've never had it before.
But when they look at their bill and they don't see any STAR savings on there, they're going to be like, you people, what's going on? And you made a mistake.
That, I understand, because my stepdad's looking for it, and he's not going to get it.
Only if he moves.
No, he folded a trust, so even though he's in the same house, he was not on the tax rolls as the owner of that property last year, and he's looking for his STAR, and he's 87. I told him Tom would call him.
Oh, I didn't hear that yet. Oh, yeah, I didn't hear that yet, okay.
He goes in spring, though, it's okay.
Okay, and certainly, decision of the board, I just think this is a tough year for that, just for that sake alone. Once people are used to that, after the first year of going through it, I think we're going to see a lot of calls and a lot of angst from homeowners in year one, and I can't blame them.
But you can make the decision in June, he's not asking you to make it right now.
Nope.
I'd be in favor of making the decision in June, gather a little bit more information, but it sounds like unless the savings is quite significant, which I'd be surprised if it was, we're going to move forward with the town at least for a year and come up with a better plan, if that's even possible, for following years.
I'm fine with it, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily answer the question about the shared software, but we can take it in pieces.
You need to have that before June, then. You need to have the answers on the amount.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Do you need anything else? You okay?
I think so.
Okay.
The other thing was, what was his name, Jeffrey Stone from Hatchens and Ross, we met with today about bond council, and our numbers came back pretty good.
They did.
Retiring the 2006 bonds, or retired, and we anticipated $120,000 savings, and it turned into 180, so. And how many years is this over again?
Through, yeah, through '22, so basically about seven, six, seven years. So, that extra will carry through and be distributed.
It's really nice, because the town of Eden talked about this at their last town meeting, and they, they did a really nice job, too, so between the municipality and the school district, it's been a good year.
So, we estimate-
We just wish we would have their numbers come back.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, well, they also probably had larger debt than you did as well, so we estimated about $22,000 in savings next year, it'll be about $30,000, so.
Good.
Every little bit helps.
Okay, I do have one, I guess, a comment. Not now, I'm not asking, this is a question probably for you, Tom, so, given, I mean, the budget passed and it's great, but as we said, I think, the last board meeting, Eden still hasn't found itself in a position that many other districts have with this, with the new financing coming in from the state, and I have been approached by people in the community, people within the district, who ask, well, why? Why haven't, why aren't we there? And I try to explain the best I can, based on everything we know about the declining population and the foundation aid and all those things, but I feel like I get a little jumbled, because I get it in my head, but I don't, I'm not articulate enough with the terminology. Is there a way that we could, you could, not me, I really don't know what I'm doing, develop, like, just a little, like, even like a bullet point of, I don't know, the top five things that are impacting our current fiscal situation, because it's, it's hard, it's hard for me as an educator, and I guarantee it's hard for the teachers sitting out there to see other districts reinstating positions, and here we are, still talking about cutting people. It's a tough pill to-
That are impacting our state aid, is that-
I'm sorry?
Top five things that are impacting our state aid?
In general, impacting our-
I was going to say, I think it's-
I mean, it doesn't have to be the top five.
It's in general.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the top five, but what you think, just so I can maybe, we can give people highlights in a more concise manner, because I feel like I'm kind of all over the place when I'm trying to explain it to people, and they're looking at me probably how I look at Tom.
So you need to start with two words, inequitable and unpredictable, right?
Absolutely.
And then we'll move after that, because it's really it, I mean, because we even got caught up in that, right? It's a good idea, Jen, it's a great idea.
I'd be happy.
Thank you. Can I bring it forward?
We haven't heard anything from Jill yet. Jill has softball playing, she likes.
Can you give her a mic, though, so she can actually be heard? She's got something to be proud of here.
We play Southwestern on Friday, so they beat Lackawanna today 23 to 2.
And what do you predict the score is going to be on Friday?
I don't know, hopefully we win.
So, you're going to win, yeah, you're going to win. And the last game I was at was pretty tense.
Yeah.
It was real tense, there were a lot of people there, yep, and you're signed on to which college?
Alfred University.
And Alfred was there, two coaches?
Yep.
Yep, stayed the whole game, it was a good game, you did a good job.
Thank you.
So good luck Friday.
Thank you.